I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for February 28th, 2023. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Tralka?
Here.
Leyland?
Here. Would everyone please join us for a moment of silence today to reflect on our actions? Thank you. Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one, the agenda received or proposed as amended?
So moved. Second?
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is received. Public comments. Is there anyone in the audience today that would like to speak that's on something that's not on today's agenda? Anyone on Zoom? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlements of such claims.
Good morning, Board. Our total payments today are $150,511.99, and the amount paid out of the Sheriff's 60-40 Fund is $2,313.01.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded. If there are no further questions, please answer as your name is called.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes. Moving on to the presentation for today. We have a presentation on the UNI Dome renovation funding request. We have with us today Dr. Mark Nook, President of UNI, David Harris, UNI Director of Athletics, and Jamar Thompson, UNI Associate Athletic Director. Looks like maybe some other guests as well, but I'll let you start the program. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be with you, and thank you for the opportunity to talk a little bit about the University of Northern Iowa, and in particular, the UniDome. It's an important part of our community, and when I say "community," I think much, much larger, even than Blackhawk County, because of the service area that the University of Northern Iowa has, and in particular, the service area that the UniDome has as well. Advancing slides. Probably just have to scroll. Yeah, let's do it. One at a time. There we go. There we go. Thank you. We're in the middle of, and just announced in October, the Hour Tomorrow Campaign, the campaign for UNI. It is a campaign to really think about what is the tomorrow that the Cedar Valley, that the state of Iowa, and the country needs the University of Northern Iowa to deliver. Our goal in this campaign is to raise $250 million in private support for the university in scholarships, in support of engaged learning, think of that as internships, in support of our faculty and staff, and in support of, in particular, three iconic spaces: the Camp O'Neill on our campus, which will turn 100 years old when our university celebrates its 150th anniversary in 2026, the UniDome, which will turn 50 years old when we celebrate that 150th anniversary, and the Gallagher Blue Door Performing Arts Center, which really has become a cultural hub for this entire region. If you think a little bit about the UniDome, the McLeod Center, and the Gallagher Blue Door, and they really do perform, really do create for the entire Cedar Valley and much larger area, an arts and entertainment district for this region. The impact that we have been able to recognize from the UniDome alone is $17 million in economic impact to our community and the surrounding area. That's a huge economic impact. Because of the UniDome and the many events that are there, from Panther Athletics, our football teams play there, our softball teams play there early in the season before the weather gets tight enough to move outside. Our track and field team runs their indoor season there, lots of practices. I also remind you of the other things that happened there. Recently, we had the Pack the Dome event, where over 2,000 volunteers from around the area packed almost 80,000 backpacks for kids that needed food on the weekends, so they'd have these backpacks to take home from schools. This is also the home of concerts, of home shows, of sporting shows, of RV shows. It's also the home of a lot of high school and youth athletic events. Recently, we had a volleyball tournament on campus. They put 14 courts down in the dome, about the only place in the state of Iowa where you could put 14 courts down. Hundred-some teams from around the country into our area. The economic impact is huge. We bring people into the area. They do frequent restaurants, hotels in this area. We know of several hotels that have been built simply because the dome is there and the McLeod Center is there. The economic impact really is pretty obvious to most people. But I would like to take just a little bit of time and think about the other impact, and that's the impact on the quality of life here. It does present our citizens with an opportunity to engage in not just Panther Athletics, Division One, NCAA Division One Athletics, but concerts, home shows, recreation shows, youth activities for parents to engage in, but also for the children of the region to be a part of, and compete against not just youth in our area, but because teams are coming in from around the state and around the country, other teams as well. And let's, of course, not forget the high school state football championships they're held in the dome. It is the goal of all young football players to make it to the dome, to play in the UniDome. So, we're here today to ask, one, for your moral support. Help us achieve this goal to renovate the dome. It is nearly 50 years old. It is time to do some updates, and you'll see a little bit about what that's going to look like. But we're also here to ask for your financial support, because it is a very big lift, and quite frankly, many of our donors are asking the question, is the community engaged? Are they involved? Where's the city? Where's the county? Where's the other resources? Because of the impact, they see the impact on Cedar Falls in Waterloo, on Hudson, on the other communities in Blackhawk County, and especially on the entire county of Blackhawk. So, we're here to ask for your support as well. At this time, I'll turn it over to Jamar to tell you a little bit more about the project in particular.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Everyone. Thank you so much for us having the opportunity to be here to show you guys a little bit about the dome project, answer questions that you have, and show the vision that we set forth for the next generation regarding what we have planned and in store. So, when we look at the Hour Tomorrow Campaign, we want to make sure at this particular project, we have to, before we tell you where we're at, we want to show you where we got here, right? So, the dome was originally a vision of many people, but in particular Stan Sheriff, who was AED and the head football coach at the time in the early '70s, envisioned a multipurpose facility that would benefit this whole area. And that was a vision that not a lot of people thought was achievable, because to think to build a dome in the middle of some cornfields in Iowa was pretty risk-taking. But Stan had that vision and knew the impact that it could provide to the community and set forth on that mission. So, when you look at this project, we still had people around that were part of originally fundraising and getting this project up and coming. In fact, I had a gentleman a couple weeks ago bring this document, and it's the original feasibility study that was done. There was a local architect in Waterloo here that was a partner in this project, but what you see on the screen is one of the pieces that they used. And as you see on the screen and what I'm holding is one of the original pieces that was used to show people the vision set forth, not just an athletics facility, but for concerts and circuses and expos and other events, but truly a multipurpose facility. And so, I think that has always hold true to what the vision of the dome has been and how it has played out to this day. But it always started there with the vision of building a multipurpose facility with Stan Sheriff and others. I don't know if you can see this really well, but this was an editorial that was in one of the papers, and it just talks about the project, and on the right side here, it talks about the need for public support. A project like this needs public support, and that's what we believe as well, and that's why we're here today. So, from the early architectural drawings to getting in front of members at the state, so you have Stan Sheriff on the left, you have Robert Lonsberry, the Secretary of Agriculture, T. Wayne Davis with the tie in the middle with a white sport coat, that's Governor Robert Ray, and then you have the President of the University, John Camrick. So, all these guys coming together, all these people coming together see forth the vision of a dome being built here in the Cedar Valley. Then came the work, the work to convince people that something like this could actually work and thrive. So, there was a fundraising component, right? There's the idea, but then you actually have to raise the money. T. Wayne Davis was one of the major fundraisers for the project, along with Stan and some others. T. Wayne wasn't a graduate of UNI. He was a local businessman, and he believed the power of the project and what it could do. But his job was to convince people that a facility like this could thrive and could occur. One of the entrances is actually named after T. Wayne, and we actually have a quote from his daughter in this, in our materials that talk about how people didn't believe that they could get this done, but that only drove T. Wayne and others further to make sure that this vision became a reality. So, from the groundbreaking to the construction, to ultimately, some of you may recall, the inflated roof, to the hard shell that was put on nearly 25 years ago, the work came, and the work did achieve what it was set to be done. So, the dome was built and has been a vital part of our community to this day. And the last piece is a legacy, the impact that it's had on the community for almost 50 years, the state, the university. From Mick Jagger and the Rolling Stones, to Dolly Parton, to hosting RagBri, to what President Nook was talking about, the Martin Luther King Day service, all these things are vital to what is the quality of life and the economic driver for this community, and the dome certainly has served that since its inception. So, we believe it's time to renew the UniDome that tomorrow needs. So, Tomo Panther Athletics, as you all know, for a lot of our sports teams, a lot of our athletes, it's a pillar in the community, obviously a vital part, a very, very vital part of a driver in here. President Nook shared some numbers about the project. Half a million visitors come through the dome annually, 17 million, 17 million in economic impact that occurs from the dome annually. We can't think of a bigger project or a bigger impact of something solely that provides this community than the dome does. Roughly 200 visitors come from outside Blackhawk County annually. So, these are all types of events, and they're all critical and important to what happened here in our community. So, what about the next 50 years? That's the task we're challenged with today. We've been given this beauty of a dome. That hasn't changed a whole lot since its inception, but certainly has served its purpose. But how do we continue to grow what this place can provide for the next 50 years? And so, with that, I want to turn it over to David Harris to give you the up-to-date speed to where we're at today. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good morning. I'll add my thanks for the opportunity to be able to come and talk about this important project, not just for the athletics department and the university, but as we've said, we believe for the entire region. So, as Jamar mentioned, we want to talk about what happens with the next 50 years and how we go about achieving our goals. So, back in 2018, we set a strategic plan for UNI Athletics, and that was the first time that we ever talked about doing something with the dome and doing a renovation that has been a long time coming. So, we brought in an outside consultant to do a feasibility study for us in the fall of 2019, and the goals that we had for the dome are listed here that came out of that feasibility study. We were really excited about the opportunity to be able to do this, because it is the biggest project that we've done as an athletics department, and it's going to have the biggest impact and the biggest reach across the region. As a part of that feasibility study, we identified these as being the highlights. We knew that there would be any number of things that we could seek to do with the dome, but we had to prioritize it. We wanted it to be a part of the overall university project, the overall university campaign, with that having a $250 million goal. We knew that our goal would fit within that money frame. And so, we wanted to prioritize, what were the things that would have the biggest impact? What were the things that we could do that were most important and were most significant? So, these are the things that we decided to focus on: new seating and restrooms in premium areas, new indoor track, new lighting and sound system and signage, a new football team meeting room, which has recently been completed, a new fabric roof, centralized entrance specifically on the west side, and then greater accessibility for all. So, this is a look, this is a concept of what we are interested in on the west side of the dome. One of the things that the dome doesn't currently have is a centralized entrance, and we'd like to be able to create that on the west side. The west side is typically where most of our patrons will come into the facility, and so, we want to be able to create a bit of a wow factor when people come to the facility and come into the facility. So, you can see that with what we're looking at doing, we would want to move our restrooms north and south and be able to expand our concourse to be able to create this central entrance here that you see in the middle. If you go to the next slide, it gives you a bit of a better look. The area here that says Welcome to the UniDome, that entire pod represents new restrooms here and then also here on the north end. If you go to the next slide, this shows you an expanded concourse. One of the things that's really important for us is that we create more comfort and more room for our patrons within the facility. Right now, if you're in the dome for a game or for any competition or for an event, you'll find that there's a line for concessions, and there's a line to go into the restrooms, and if you're trying to pass up and down the concourse, then it's very difficult because it's congested. And so, we want to be able to expand the concourse, really double the size of the concourse to be able to alleviate that issue. Restrooms, I made mention of that in the beginning. It's maybe one of our biggest sore spots as a facility. When we have events now, especially when we have football games, we will open up the McLeod Center because of the lines to get into the restroom, particularly for women's restroom. So, we have to open up the McLeod Center for people to be able to go and use the restrooms in order to make sure that they can get there and then get back to their seats and continue to enjoy the game. So, those two pods at either end represent new restrooms. Right now, our restrooms are along the middle of the concourse. We want to be able to move them to the north and the south end, which allows us to be able to expand the concourse, but also expand the number of restrooms that we have. This is another look at the concourse, just as people are engaging with the concessions, going in and out of the vomitory. And then, this is probably one of our best looks at how we want to expand the concourse to be able to give people a lot more room to be able to come in. One of the things that I didn't point out in the beginning is that we want to add an elevator to the west side. So, you can see that just right here, people will come in through this vestibule, be able to go to the right, and then go on the elevator up to the top level. Right now, we don't have an elevator on the west side. The facility was built without one. So, if you're going up to the suite level, then you have to walk up the steps of the dome to be able to get there. So, if you're elderly or if you have some type of disability, then many times you're not able to go to that level because it's not accessible. So, we want to be able to correct that. This is a look at the dome, the south end zone look. A few things that you'll notice, we want to be able to add new graphics both inside and outside of the dome, so you can see some of that represented here in the center of the screen. We'll see in just a second in this northeast corner, that is where the football team meeting room has been added. Over here on the left, this represents an expansion of the suite levels that we'll talk about here in just a second. And just out of picture of this particular frame is our fabric roof. If you've been inside the dome, you know that there is an area, translucent area, right in the center of the roof that lets light in. It's one of the things that differentiates our facility from a lot of different domes across the country. That needs to be replaced. It's about 25 years old. It's at the end of its useful life, and we believe that when the dome has leaks from time to time, it's the area where the fabric roof and the steel portion of the roof come together. So, as we look to replace that, we feel like that's another issue that can be rectified with the dome, and we hope to be able to do that work next summer. This is the football team meeting room that was recently completed. Our football team is currently using this. Before this was done, our football team did not have a team meeting space. So, they were using classrooms, they were using our media room, they were using areas within the WRC. It's hard to find a space where 100, 120 guys can come together, but this gives us an opportunity to be able to do this as a part of the project. There is a wall that basically divides this room into two different rooms, so the offense can meet on one side, the defense can meet on the other, and the team can meet together when they need to. But what it also does is, on a football game day, we can use this as two different suites. So, we have people that rent out this as two different suites, and it's a revenue-generating opportunity for us. It's a great place to be able to watch the game. So, again, it's become a multipurpose area for us. The next slide, this is a look at the dome without the football field down. We need to replace our indoor track, and so, I don't know, I can't see what you're seeing on the screen. I hope it looks purple, because on my screen, it looks blue. And I'm thinking, wow, that's, that would be really problematic. But we want to replace the track, which is currently red, and make it purple. And we want to replace all of our seats, which are currently red, yellow, and blue, and make them all purple. We feel like we need to add more purple and gold to the facility. So, being able to have a new indoor track is critical for us, because we have a track team that competes indoor and does a fantastic job, and the track is also at the end of its useful life. So, it gives us an opportunity to be able to work on that. Then, with the seating, again, if you've been in the dome, you know that we really have bleachers with seat backs and not true seats. So, we want to take all of that out and put in seats to be able to make people more comfortable when they come to the venue. This is a look at the west side. A couple of things that you'll notice, in putting in new seats, we want to be able to widen the aisles, and we want to be able to add in armrails. Many times when people come to the facility, they talk about not feeling comfortable going up and down the steps, because there's nothing to hold on to. And so, again, if you're one of our elderly patrons, some of them have said, hey, I've given up my season tickets, because I don't feel comfortable going up and down the stairs without possibly creating a fall. And so, that's, as we talked about, things that we need to prioritize, that became one of them. So, add in the new seats, widen the aisles, add in the armrails. Then, as you'll notice here at the top, currently, our suite level has three big suites, each of them hold about 40 or so people. And as we go out and talk with people about the opportunity to be able to rent these suites, they will tell us that the suites are really too large for them, and they're really looking for something between 10 and 16 seats. And so, we want to divide this up into 10 different suites of about that size to be able to increase premium seating opportunities for our patrons to be able to come to the games and be able to enjoy it. So, this is a look at what we propose. It's a concept that would be very similar to the McLeod Center as far as how we want to be able to create suites, give people a premium seating opportunity, and be able to allow them to enjoy the games or enjoy the other events that are happening within the dome. Right now, because of our suite setup, if you are in our center suite, our center suite right now is the president's suite. Well, in order to get to the president's suite, you have to walk through the other suites to be able to get there. So, another thing that we'd like to be able to do with the renovation is to be able to create a hallway behind the suites that allows you to be able to enter each of those 10 suites through the back. So, you're entering and exiting through your specific door, through your specific suite. So, the elevator that we showed, the concourse, it would go up to the suite level, and this is where it would empty out and how you would access those suites. And then, finally, here on the east side, it's just a look. These are really placeholders. A welcome to the UniDome really just signifies that we want to add more graphics inside and outside the facility. A few things that are not mentioned here are that you don't see with the graphics or with the rendering, is that we want to add new lighting, as well as a new sound system and new graphics inside and outside of the facility. Those are things that we get comments about. Those are things that will allow us to be able to add better atmosphere and give our fans a better experience when they're coming to the event. So, a $50 million project, with the first phase being the football team meeting room, the roof replacement, and then the west addition. The second phase being some behind-the-scenes enabling, the track replacement, and then the bowl improvement with the seats and the aisles and the armrails. And then, the final phase, graphics inside and outside the facility, the sound system. And on the corner of 27th and Hudson, we want to put a marquee sign out there, very similar to what you see at Gallagher Blue Door, because we still have many people that tell us, hey, we don't always know what's happening within the dome or what's happening at the McLeod Center. So, by putting a marquee there, we can advertise when we're having a farm show, or when we're having a sports show, or when we're having a game, or when we're having some other type of event, because there are plenty of people that go up and down Hudson Road, and that's a great opportunity for us to be able to make sure they know and understand what's happening within the dome. So, investing in the future. As Jamar mentioned, it's our time to renew the vision for the dome. We were handed a vision by people who worked very hard and put a lot on the line to be able to create this facility. Now, almost 50 years later, it's our turn to be able to take what they envisioned and carry that legacy forward for the next 50 years. Gives us an opportunity to do all the things that are listed here on the screen, including building upon the legacy of the UniDome. We have talked a lot in this campaign about the dome being an iconic facility for so many people, whether you grew up as a young man wanting to play a football championship in the dome, or whether you attended a concert, whether it was a place that you did a community service event, or whatever it is, the dome has represented so many things to so many different people over the years. It's our turn. It's our responsibility to be able to make sure that for the next 50 years, the dome is a vibrant facility for the entire area, for the county, really for the state of Iowa. And so, this is our opportunity to be able to do that. Investing in the future begins with you, begins with all of us. As we said, this is a part of the Hour Tomorrow Campaign for the University of Northern Iowa. We are building the UNI that tomorrow needs, and part of that is renovating the dome that tomorrow needs. And so, we respectfully ask from the Board of Supervisors and for the county to make an investment of $5 million in this facility. As President Nook said, we have a $50 million goal. It is the biggest campaign that we've done as an athletics department, and it is truly an all-hands-on-deck project. And so, we are asking everyone that we feel has a connection to the dome, that benefits from the dome, that will benefit from what the dome has represented over time and will benefit from the renovations that we are looking to make, because we feel like this is a truly special facility for so many people. And if we want to continue to create the economic impact for the county, if we want to continue to have visitors come and use our hotels and go to our restaurants, we need a facility in the dome that will bring that type of vibrance, that type of energy, that type of excitement. As we travel around to different sporting events, we have a chance to be able to look at facilities on other campuses when we go and compete against those teams. And we know that there was a time when the dome was far ahead of what other facilities were on other campuses. Now, as time has gone on, and we haven't made that investment, we've fallen behind. When we go to different places and we see what they have on their campuses and what that represents, not only for their campus but for their community, they are able to do some things from a modern amenity standpoint that we just don't have as a dome. And so, we are in a position that we now need to not only catch up, but try to bring something that will put us back in a position where we started, which is having some of the best facilities anywhere and being able to use those facilities to bring an economic impact to our community and to be able to serve our patrons. With that, we'll stop, and either Jamar, President Nook, or myself will be happy to answer any questions that any of the members have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there some questions?
Yeah, I was wondering, actually, I spent a lot of time in the dome. I played electric bass for four years in the marching band and pep band also. And I was there, it was my freshman year, was the first year of that hard roof. It was 1998 in the fall. And I remember, one of the things that really changed the acoustics of the dome, going from the inflated soft roof to the hard roof. And I know that we, when I was on student government, we lost out on a bunch of big concerts. People would come and check out the acoustics of the dome and say that we can't work with, we can't work with how boomy it is now. I was just wondering if there's any improvements being made, not just to the sound system, but to the actual, like, acoustics of the structure?
It certainly is.
It's certainly something that we would want to study, especially as we begin to do the work on the fabric roof and as we look at the sound system because we have not had as many concerts as we've had in the past, right? And we would love to be able to bring that back. We feel like it's an important economic driver for us. And so we want to not only look at the acoustics, but anything else that local or national concert promoters will tell us will help us really be able to get back into the mix as far as being chosen as a concert location. So from our standpoint, we would not only want to look at that, but anything else that we think would help us.
Thank you.
That would be in addition to the 50 million, or was that, since it's not built into that right now?
I would say that as we're looking at the roof and the sound system, we're going to have consultants that are going to help us do that work. And so we would just ask them to consider that as they are doing their measurements and as looking at it. So it very likely be a part of what we're already doing. I don't know that there would be additional costs, but if there is, I think it would certainly be worthwhile for us.
Can you speak a little bit about the other governmental support? I'm assuming you've gone to Cedar Falls City Council. Just talk a little bit about where they've, they've come at.
Absolutely. So we did go to Cedar Falls City Council. We made an identical ask for $5 million of support. They have pledged 2.5 million to the project and to be paid over a two-year time period, I believe 1.25 million a year. So we did make that ask here just a couple of months ago.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You mentioned that the program is in phases. So will they, are some of these completed as phases as well? Or are you waiting until you reach the goal? And I mean, I know you mentioned the team meeting room and seen that, but I thought, are there other parts of it that will be?
Yeah, good question. So the first phase is $20 million. The second phase is roughly $20 million and the third phase is between $5 and $10 million. So our first goal is to raise $20 million for Phase One. And right now, we are close to about $17 million pledged for the first phase. So for us, part of what we have to consider is not only having that money pledged, but we need to have it on hand before we can start a project. And so as we look to do Phase One, I mentioned that we've already done the, the team room. And next, we're looking at doing the fabric roof, which would be in summer of '24. And we believe we already have the money on hand to be able to do that. But then to do the remainder of Phase One, which is the West Side Edition, we'll not only need money pledged, but we're trying to get as much as we can on hand to be able to start that project. So that's the way that we're looking divided up. And as we go into Phase Two and Phase Three, it'll be very similar. We'll start by having conversations and getting money pledged. But ultimately, our ability to be able to go forward with those phases, at least the timeliness of it, will be determined by how quickly those pledges are actually coming to our foundation.
Thank you. Are there any questions from supervisors on Zoom? Or comments?
I have none.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Just curious about your plans for the renovation of the seating. Will that change capacity very much?
Good question. So right now, our capacity is just over 16,000. Between what we've done with the football team room, where we eliminated some seating, and then what we're doing by replacing all of the seating, we're going to go down just below 14,000 will be our total capacity, which is still certainly plenty for what it is that we need. So we will lose a couple thousand seats.
Thanks.
Thank you.
It's very rare that all 16,000 were ever filled, right, anyways, in the, in the past? So it's...
Well, we're doing this renovation so we can fill 14,000.
Exactly. Right, right. That's what I was saying.
Plans for that anyway, yeah, for sure.
When you, when, when, we're getting feedback from event organizers and especially those who've toured the facility but have chosen a different facility, right? And looking at that 17 million of economic impact and realizing what's, what's potentially lost because of existing, you know, having a facility that's not as modern as some of the other communities are able to present. What are, what are the, the main tough spots for them? Is it, is it the concourse? Is it the seating? What's, what's their biggest issue?
Yeah. And it can depend on the event and the organizer and what they're bringing in. In some cases, it could be the restrooms and whether or not there's enough for the number of people that are coming in. In some cases, it's just a feel of modern amenities, you know? Are people going to want to come to a concert? And will they be able to get the things that they're used to from concessions, from seating, from ease of access? Think about our restroom situation. If you're putting 16,000 into a facility that doesn't have enough restrooms, and you have to empty out into another facility to be able to have adequate restrooms, then that in and of itself would cause people to look at other opportunities. There's some other things that are mentioned to us just as far as if you're putting together a, a soundstage for a concert, and what does it take to be able to do that? And what's the ease of being able to do the build out for that and the tear down? There's some things that in neither one of the facilities that are, that are not in place to be able to do that in a way that's easy for concert promoters. So overall, they mostly are looking at things that would make the patron experience better, but there are some behind the scenes things that are just from a setup and tear down that also have an impact on them.
I would assume also the suite setup impacts their ability to sell sponsorships.
Right.
Which makes the ability for those events to make dollars and cents.
And you think about, like, for us, when we sell a suite, we're selling it to you for the entire, for everything that's happening within that facility. So if you buy a suite in the dome, whether there's a concert or a game or whatever, then the suite is yours. You have the first right of refusal. Obviously, if you're not going to be using it and the concert promoter or whatever event has, has a use for it, a need for it, then we want to make it available to them. But as you do upgrades for those, then people are more likely to want to rent out those suites because they're a nice place to be able to watch whatever event. Or if they are out of town, then if you're looking at it as an incoming promoter, it may be a great way to be able to take care of a VIP.
Are there any other questions? I was going to say, it's a great presentation. And I'm saying, you've really, between the three of you, answered a lot of the questions. So I don't know if there are any additions.
No, it, it really is an important part of the, kind of the quality of life puzzle in the community. I do believe, especially, I mean, we hear more and more is we struggle with recruiting employees at the county, as we, as other businesses struggle and we just struggle to grow the population of the community. It's quality of life is, is one of the big things. And we're definitely missing out on the ability to, you know, go to a big show, you know, in your own community. I mean, I'll, I spend a good chunk of money to go travel to another city to see a big concert. And so there's, there is a lot of, both quality of life and economic activity that we're leaving on the table, I think.
I'd forgotten all the events that we did used to have, the entertainers and the types of things that were earlier on, so.
Yeah, no, coming, coming here, moving here in '98 to start at school, it seemed like all the great stories of all the great shows of the dome was all history. You know, hearing about the Rolling Stones or the Who and stuff that I would lose my mind to see.
Maybe some.
And so it'd be really great, you know, to bring back like the equivalent of, of who that is today, you know? I remember we tried to get Dave Matthews when I was on student government, and we were told that their scouts came and checked out the acoustics and said, no way. But it's, there's a lot of potential.
Yeah, certainly. Certainly a major undertaking. But yes, I was going to say a welcome for the community, I'm sure.
Thank you very much for your time. We, we appreciate it. We appreciate the consideration of, of the investment request. And we're certainly available if you all have any other questions after the presentation. But as you all have mentioned, it's an important project for the community. It's vital, we feel, as we look to move forward. It's a great economic driver and it's just truly an iconic structure. And, and we feel it's part of all of our responsibilities to make sure that we take care and care forward the legacy that has been entrusted to us. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. And before you leave, I was going to say, we have our former, oh, I was going to say, you have some more to say, Jamar? Something more? Okay, I was going to say, our former county treasurer is a guest here with us today, and we're so glad she's here. And she's also a big UNI fan. And she just wanted to pass off something. And I said, no, this was an opportunity for her to share what's happened.
After attending the kickoff last year with the concerts and the ballgame and the tailgating and everything, when I came back to work, I thought, how can us, as a small office, be participants in this? We see the millions given by individuals and groups and, and businesses and that, but there's small people that can also contribute too. So with that, as all offices that dress up for work every day, Jean Day was always a highlight for our office. So I declared November and December as Jean Days last year. And so all the office participated and with the collection that we received. And also I have a family that's quite involved with UNI. And I had a daughter and son-in-law that helped match the funds. So I have a card here for a small amount, not the millions that I'd love to give if I wanted. God, you're listening. So anyway, with this, I just want to challenge also all the other small offices, the small businesses, the people that think that they can't contribute at $10, $100, $1,000. Find somebody that can match those because maybe they can't give the millions either, but they would, they don't want to do that small collections and that. But if you find somebody that can match it too, all of those will become millions. So with that, thanks.
They sure will. Thank you. Thanks very much, Rita. Well, thank you, gentlemen, for, I guess I used the presentation and attending the meeting today. I was going to say, you're certainly welcome to stay, but if you need to leave, please feel free. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to item five, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials. Excuse me.
Good morning. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. Just a brief update on the roads, particularly the gravel roads are still in poor condition. A lot of potholes and are busily, are heavily traveled gravel roads. We are getting to more of a spring-like temperature. So we are seeing a lot of the frost coming out of the roads. And frankly, there's not a lot of frost left in the roads. Within a few weeks, we should be able to start, once the roads get dry enough, we should be able to start placing spot rock on the roads. That will greatly help some of the calls we've been receiving. I know I asked people to be patient, but we, we really do need the roads to, to dry out some more. And just the past week, with the rain and then possibly some more rain, they have led to soggy roads with a lot of potholes. So again, it will be a few weeks, but we are, we do anticipate we should, we should be able to get out there and start placing spot rock on these roads. Can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
I'd just be curious, this spring, just for updates as the thaw happens on how those drainage areas are working?
Yes. Yep, I will keep you posted on the, the stone columns we placed on Leversee Road.
Have you been having a lot of calls? I know the roads were bad for quite a while, but instead they've just kind of tapered off?
On the last few days, they've picked up again, just with the rain, I imagine. So.
Thank you. Any other? Yeah, thank you.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm the HR director. So just want to give a quick update on the process for the PDQs that have been coming in. So right now, supervisors and department heads will be reviewing their staff's PDQs that were due last Friday. So we've received several already. So kudos to a lot of the departments and staffs that got this completed. So the due date for the supervisors to review them is this Friday, and then they will be pushed to HR, where we will do our review, and then we will push those to the consultants. So just want to remind everyone that if you are a department head or a supervisor and you haven't seen a PDQ from a staff member, it could be an individual one or a group one. We will be following up with you because it's really important to have a strong participation on this in order for the consultants to have a very comprehensive study and evaluation of our job classifications to be prepared to go to the market, I guess, or to go with that data for the benchmark jobs to then seek the compensation rates that are equivalent to other communities and cities, counties, schools, things like that. So we have identified about 70 benchmark jobs. So just a reminder, not every job is going to have, is, is going to be surveyed for salaries because sometimes we have unique roles here at the county that aren't exactly a one-for-one in another setting or organization. But we have identified about 70, which is, I believe, a little over half. And then we're also identifying the comparators right now, which that will all get rolled up and, and presented to the advisory committee here soon for their kind of input and approval. So, and other than that, we're just moving right along. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning. Mike Hendrickson, Director of Blackhawk County Conservation. I just very quickly wanted to remind everyone, Maple Cert Festival is coming, beginning the 10th of March. It'll be the 10th, 11th, and 12th. And I also wanted to remind everyone that it is, you do need to purchase tickets ahead of time for the event. We started this last year. It was kind of a way to work around COVID, and we discovered that it, we felt like it gave a much more high-quality type event. We had great feedback from that process, so we're going to stick with it. Time slots are filling, though. I'm getting notices each and every day from the staff that time slots are filling up. So just a reminder, purchase your tickets online, and we'd love to see you in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room? Anyone on Zoom that would like to give an update? Seeing none, hearing none. We'll move on to item six, minutes approved for February 21st, 2023.
So moved.
Second?
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign. Minutes are approved. Item seven, the Cosend Agenda. The following items will be acted upon by a single resolution without separate discussion.
A move.
A second.
Second.
Been moved in second. Excuse me. Nothing wishes to be removed? Well, please answer as your name is called.
Excuse me. Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Item eight, contracts and agreements. Resolution that the federal aid agreement between Blackhawk County and the Iowa Department of Transportation for a county highway bridge program for East Cedar Wopsey Road Bridge over Crane Creek be approved and direct the chair to sign for same as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, Kathy?
Yeah, I should say, I, I did send you an email about this, and I forgot to mention that the cost, the agreement is for $700,000, $700,000 is what the agreement, agreed cost is. And as I mentioned to you, we are moving back into federal aid projects with, through the Iowa DOT. So this says, by signing this agreement, we are, you are being notified that we are having to comply with all federal requirements. And we, of course, will, will do that as we work to design and then the construction of this next year.
Thank you. Any questions for Kathy? Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka? Paul?
Yes.
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Item B, resolution that the pre-construction agreement between Blackhawk County, Iowa, and the Iowa Department of Transportation for the paving of gravel road approaches along US 63 at an estimated cost of $52,500, Blackhawk County, which is budgeted for fiscal year 2023, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same as recommended by Catherine Nicholas.
So moved. Second?
Moved in second, Kathy?
Yeah, this project was actually completed last construction season. I guess it slipped through the cracks between the Iowa DOT. And it is a little bit of a different type of agreement. It's strictly between us and the DOT. We are paying for this with local money. We have this amount budgeted in our FY '23 budget to pay for these concrete approaches in the south portion of the county.
Okay. If there are no further questions, please answer as your name is called.
Treoka?
A more legible yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Item nine, other business. Resolution to approve the Treasurer's Office remodel project with an estimated cost of $500,000 to be paid for the American Rescue Plan funds from... There, I was going to say, go ahead, Mike.
I'll go ahead and comment now. Wait for a motion.
Yep.
So Baker Tilly's recently completed review of an eligibility questionnaire for the, for the Treasurer's Office remodel. I believe that... I believe that Rita completed this late last fall. And at the time, I think the $500,000 was in, I would call it a rough estimate. I think it was based in part on the space enhancement study. So there's going to be more we're going to learn if, in fact, this project goes forward. Right now, however, Baker Tilly found that it was eligible as an enumerated capital project under the Act. And so that, for people who are, who are looking at the burden of proof continuum, that places it at a number six on there. Now, if the project were to eventually exceed $1 million, that would change where it sits on the burden of proof continuum and would require a written justification if indeed it went into that territory. I know a question was raised earlier as to whether, you know, if it was very close to a million, if you could, or it was just barely over a million, if you could avoid those hoops by, by paying for less than a million with American Rescue Plan funds, and then the remainder was something else. And yes, that would avoid the million-dollar threshold hoops under the American Rescue Plan. But right now, it's for approval of the project to get going. Obviously, additional board approval would be required if and when it exceeded a half a million dollars.
Okay, thank you. I know that was really, it wasn't so much a question for me trying to avoid that cap as much as it was of not believing that this project will be near $500,000, that it'll be much larger.
So it was just so prepared. We're all thinking that as a, at least a distinct possibility, just based on what we're seeing in other projects.
And obviously going to attend does, yeah, have more hoops or hurdles for us to jump through. But like I said, so that can be determined later?
Yep.
That's...
And, and none of that, you know, no, obviously any contract that would be entered into would be subject to board approval. At this point, it's, it's going to take some type of an RFP just to get the ball rolling on this.
It is. And how are we going to go, planning to go about that? Because that will be an immediate step that we're going to need to do as well as probably employ an engineering...
Well, and that's, that's a departmental responsibility. However, the, what we've seen other departments do has been, there's a couple of different ways they can go about it. But what I would imagine would be done here is, first of all, Treasurer's Office would consult with Envision Architecture just because they did the initial space study to see what their thinking is. And possibly, in the event that we're looking like it would exceed that amount, they would be, you know, tied in with Baker Tilly as well if we're looking at a written justification. However, that would be the initial step. If, if Envision has not designed out what the remodel would look like, that would actually be the first step on this.
I just thought to keep these moving, I thought there's some big hurdles sometimes that we need to, yeah, address.
Yep. And this, the, the first hurdle was, was getting it, getting it evaluated. That has been cleared. The next hurdle is, is this meeting today to move it forward.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else have questions?
Yeah, and I'm just, and you know, as I've got, I support this project. I do want to see it done, but we've also got, I believe, you know, Elections Office proposal coming up. And we've got, absolutely have to do something with this money with, for the public health clinic. That's, that just has to be done, in my opinion. And so I'm just trying to calculate kind of where we're at with American Rescue Plan dollars still remaining that have not assigned to purposes already with final approval from the board. And just so, just so that we can, just so I make sure we're moving forward with all the critical priorities.
And that, those exact figures can be provided and actually are part of the spreadsheet that gets emailed to the board periodically. I can say that based on my recollection, we're sitting right around $900,000 to a million of the lost revenue portion of the funds having been committed. And I believe we are sitting at roughly $7 or $8 million of the remaining 15, 15 and a half million. And again, these are rough figures based on my recollection, but I, but I believe that's pretty close to what, what the last totals indicated.
We were hoping to kind of have an ARPA update or work session or something once we get through budget. I think that would probably be helpful for all of us.
They'll be coming soon.
I think, I think that's probably good timing. But I also wanted to speak to Supervisor Schwartz's question about the health clinic. Something else came through the pike last week. I've got to go check back on it, but they're, they have been actively working, Caitlin, others in her department, and Baker Tilly on working out, getting, getting going on the written justification. I believe what I saw come through, which I did not find to at the time due to other obligations, was a kind, I want to say it was kind of a rough draft or kind of a skeleton of what that justification may look like. So that is coming, but it is, nobody's forgetting about the health clinic. It's definitely a front and center priority that gets discussed by the committee at every meeting.
And these three, while they are sizable projects, they are designated or considered, being considered, I guess, from funding options that are not lost revenue.
Correct.
Other than, right.
Yep. Right now, any...
We don't, we don't know what the evaluations will be yet, though.
Yep. We'll, we'll see what the evaluation is on the health clinic. We do have an evaluation on the, on the treasurer, obviously. That's why we're coming to you with that. There's been an evaluation, but needs to be more committee discussion concerning the, the Elections Office only because there, there was some discrepancy about the understanding of what the anticipated cost of that is. So all three of those are very, very high on the list right now. And in particular, I think, at least what I'm hearing personally, is that the, in terms of departments that are here in the courthouse, Elections and Treasurers are our biggest crowding concerns right now. Elections for obviously at election time, but the Treasurer's Office on a day-to-day basis.
Thank you, Mike.
Mike, I got a question. Going back to that million-dollar threshold, is there any disadvantages to the county on purposely keeping it below $1 million?
My opinion, the short answer is no, except that it takes longer to, to get the evaluation complete because you have to have that written justification. And it costs more from an administrative standpoint because a number of people have to be engaged to complete that written justification. To give you an example, over at the Sheriff's Office, they had recently, and this one's not been decided upon yet, but they had recently done a justification for an evidence intake facility. In the process of doing that, the architects who had designed what that facility would, would be like had to be consulted and then paid for their time in order to help develop that, that justification. In addition to that, our consultants, our ARPA consultants at Baker Tilly also had time involved, and that had to be paid for. And my recollection is that the, the delay was roughly a month, maybe it was more than that on that. I'd have to look back. So there was at least a number of weeks of additional delay, and that's what's going on over at the Health Department right now with theirs. So the big, if there is a disadvantage, it is in the delay in the cost, Mr. Little. But it's, I, I perceived your question to be, is it an advantage from an approval standpoint? And in that regard, all I would say is probably not, except that the higher the cost, generally, the more they look at things.
And we do have funding options available to us, too, if they're, once we know what those dollars are and what those projects would be, if we did want to do some assortment of...
That's right. And then to, to, at the risk of, maybe you didn't, you were satisfied with what's already been said. But on the question about using lost revenue dollars, the ARPA committee is operating with the understanding that anything that we try to get evaluated and approved shouldn't, should be approved as an expense category and not under lost revenue. If something is, is being put forward that, well, you can use lost revenue for this, we're, we're going to make that very clear. It's, it's not going to be just approve a project and oh, it might be paid for under lost revenue. Now, there were a couple of things from very, very early on that I think ended up being, and this was before I was chairing the ARPA committee. In fact, some of this was before we even had an ARPA committee. But we had, they had been approved, and then they ended up going under lost revenue. But those things are included in that $900,000 or so that's been committed under lost revenue.
No, that's great. I think that's really what the board thought, too. As far as the lost revenue is kind of a, projects, what we've talked about are kind of in a whole pattern in that for what we want to see is available later.
Yep.
Yep. Thank you, Mike.
You bet.
Okay, this was moved in second. If no one has any further questions, please answer as your name is called.
I'll make the motion.
All right, thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. Thank you.
Item B, discussion on parking in the courthouse lot.
Good morning, Board. Rory Giving, Maintenance Superintendent.
Morning.
Been asked to speak on this as a discussion item. This is the parking lot procedures with regards to parking permits that are issued. If the board recalls, we've had a great deal of discussion of this in the past. So I figured I would just kind of recap on, on some of that discussion that we've had. So if you look at our ordinance, and this is actually defined in the Blackhawk County ordinance, so it's not a policy, it's an ordinance. And we have two categories for parking permits. We have a temporary parking permit and a permanent parking permit. And, oh, I say three categories, and an employee parking permit. And so as you look through this ordinance, there is criteria that's been established. We have criteria established when we go to issue a temporary parking pass. There's five pieces of criteria that must be met in order to assign that temporary pass. Where the ordinance is lacking is criteria identified for a permanent pass. And that's been a topic of discussion that we've had in the past several times. We, in looking at that, we've offered up suggestions, and I'll kind of touch on, on what some of those were. But ultimately, I think where, where the conversations have kind of stalled out is, is really the question of what do we do with the existing parking passes that are signed if they may not meet the proposed criteria that was presented in the past? And so I just wanted to kind of touch a little bit on where we currently sit. And so with regards to our current courthouse parking lot, we have approximately 154 parking stalls, eight of which of those are handicapped. We have approximately 80 to 90 permanent parking permits issued for courthouse employees. For our employee lot, we have approximately 82 parking stalls. Over at our jury lot, we, Blackhawk County owns 50 parking stalls. 38 of those are, are jury stalls that the court administration does pay Blackhawk County for on a yearly basis. Nine of those spots are utilized by county vehicles, and three of those are county employee stalls. So that's kind of a recap of how we're sitting with regards to the numbers. What was proposed in the past for criteria for the permanent parking class was looking at county vehicles. Even though we do have nine stalls over in the jury lot, obviously, we have more county vehicles than that. So county vehicles, which would include maintenance, sheriff, and engineering here at the courthouse. An employee vehicle, if that vehicle is used for county business on a regular basis. And we did have quite a bit of dialogue back and forth on how do you qualify or quantify county business, the frequency and what have you. Elected officials and department heads, judges and magistrates, and the news media. Those were five pieces of criteria that were presented to the board supervisors. That would have been back in the neighborhood of 2018. In fact, we had drafted an ordinance change at that time. And I believe the, the area that did not get decided on was whether or not the existing passes that had been issued would be grandfathered in. And so that's, when I started looking back at our discussions, that's where I kind of cued in on really is, is the decision that needs to be made is if, if these five pieces of criteria are incorporated into the ordinance, what do we do with the existing approximately 88? Wouldn't be all of those 88 permits, but it would be, you know, a portion of those. Would they get grandfathered in under this new guideline? Or would we start from scratch and go through and see if these employees met one of those five pieces of criteria and see where that ends up? So that, that is kind of the discussions that we've had in the past with regards to permits. We've also looked at this ordinance in regards to some language that was in there that we cleaned up. We looked at the, the, the tickets themselves that our guards would issue, whether or not we increase the time that the public is allotted to parking this lot from 30 minutes to 60 minutes, knowing that sometimes it's very difficult to, to do business in a 30-minute time span. We also looked at increasing the cost of the ticket to have more enforcement on there because we do have habitual violators from time to time that will just pay the $5 parking fee or ticket. Even though within our ordinance, we do reserve the right to look at, you know, a person who's received multiple tickets throughout the year. And we've done that in the past where we've communicated with them. And you could go as far as to tow them. Ultimately, that's not our goal, is to tow employees out of our parking lot. That's, that's kind of a last resort, but we have gotten to that point in the past. So that's just a real brief recap of some of the discussions that we've had in the past. And so I would say, moving forward, looking at those five pieces of criteria, deciding whether or not to grandfather existing permits in and adjusting this ordinance to, to allow for that criteria to be in there. And it also does our department a huge advantage to being able to clearly identify who can have a pass and who cannot. And it really simplifies that process. As you can imagine, when somebody comes and asks for a temporary parking permit, when we have five pieces of criteria that we look at, and if they don't meet one of those five pieces, it's very easy to say, sorry, you don't meet that, or yes, you do, and here you go. Unfortunately, for those permanent passes, it is a little bit of a daunting task because right now, an application would get filled out and get sent to the board, and the board would make that decision on a case-by-case basis.
But Rory, we have 140 positions in the courthouse parking lot? Spots? And out of the 140, 80 of them are permitted already?
We have approximately 154 parking stalls in our main employee, or our main parking lot here at the courthouse.
And 80 is permitted?
You said 80 to 90, so I assume plus those handicaps, probably about 100. I'm guessing they're...
Correct.
Does that sound right?
Need that breakdown? I've seen it many times.
Yeah.
Of the 80 to 100?
Yeah. Hold on one second here. So what we did is, we, we have two categories. We have, we broke it down by depart, or three categories. Broke it down by department and then frequent or occasional. And the reason we put occasional, because we have a lot of judges that are issued a permanent pass, but they're only occasionally here, if that makes sense. We have a few for county social services that are only... makes sense. We have a few for county social services that are only occasionally here, public defenders that are occasionally here. The frequent one, the highest number obviously is the judges, and then it goes down to each department, and typically it would be the department head, managers, and their supervisors.
Bring the numbers off by departments.
Okay, so we've got, we've got assessors with four, we've got attorney with four, we've got auditor with three, we've got Board of Supervisors with six, clerk of courts with three, district court judges, 22, elections, one, engineering, one, HR, one, IT, one, I believe that actually may be two now, maintenance, two, recorders, three, treasurer, five, county social services, again, they fell under the occasional with three, media, one, health department, occasionally, two, and public defender, occasionally, eight. So with that, we have 62 tickets roughly that are on a frequent basis, and about 30 on an occasional basis.
You know, we have no policy then, you're saying, Rory? I thought we had a Board of Supervisors policy.
We, we do list out, we have a ordinance which lists out the permanent parking passes, but unfortunately, it does say in there, as set by criteria by the Board of Supervisors, which that criteria portion is still missing. That's the portion that needs to be put into our ordinance so we can enforce that.
I'm assuming the ordinance, main purpose of putting it in the ordinance is that we're charging a fine, and that has to be established, but as far as the rules and regulations, I don't know if that belongs in there because ordinances are expensive, so we have to publish them and hold a public hearing, and we can't be changing them every other year because you get a board on there and it's something's different. So I understand the fee part because that's part of the Iowa code, but I think the Board should have a side policy that dictates who gets a permits and who doesn't and so forth, and leave that language out of the ordinance so we don't have to change that ordinance all the time. Because you said 2018 was the last time we changed it?
No, we actually made a recommendation to change it back in 2018 to include the criteria into that ordinance, and that was presented to the Board, and it was not adopted. And there were some notes that were taken back at that time. One of them was the cost to change an ordinance was a concern. Another one was, do we grandfather the existing permits in? That was another concern. So I think a combination of concerns at that time resulted in not adopting that change in the ordinance.
I know, over the years, we've had quite a few violators. One individual from the clerk of courts did not have a pass, parked in there continuously. You had the tow truck out there continuously. She would run out, move the car. Soon as a tow truck left, she'd bring the car back again. And there's numerous others that did it over the years too. So somehow we got to figure her out and try to keep as many spaces we can for the public because, again, they only have a short period of coming in and taking care of business, usually at lunchtime, seeing as that the county closes now fairly early at 4:30.
I would just sort of go in that we move forward with the criteria that, that was laid out with, with nobody grandfathered in, because we don't need to be that involved with approving individual parking permits. That seems pretty silly.
Yeah.
Well, that's how it's been done.
Did you want to propose something, I guess, bring back to, I mean, I guess, do we want more information, I think, too, when you're talking about some of the, I don't know, just a question? When you talk about grandfathering things in and that type of thing that you're speaking of, and not, and I don't care about changing the ordinance as much as I do is making a how, not a policy, I guess it wouldn't be, but some kind of a procedure to maybe try some of these things, or, you know, and then we have the ability to change if we see there's problems. We talked about at one time, too, having more than a 30, 30-minute time limit. You know, if people were getting tickets for that, or if we really have people that are abusing, hanging out in the courthouse, I just, I doubt it. But I know we do have other, others using it, you know, the city of Waterloo, as well as Department of Corrections have visitors that use our lot too, but.
They love those snack machines.
Yeah. That's what they're coming for, I'm sure. Yeah, but I don't know. What, any suggestions or recommendations?
Well, what I can do, I think what might be helpful is, we, we have the criteria established that was presented back in 2018. The one section that's a little vague is the county employee vehicles, if a vehicle's used by, for county business on a regular basis. We did put a caveat in there, once a month, doesn't necessarily qualify. So I think we need to probably clearly put in some qualifiers in there, what would constitute a, a regular basis.
Excuse me?
Yes?
Can I comment on that? I think the reason this was brought up at this time was because of a request from my department. We have an employee who really doesn't fit any of the criteria that are currently there. It's more a situation where, and maybe you can help me here, Amanda. I, I believe this employee is exempt from FLSA. We're talking about Jen Todd.
Yeah, that's a good one.
But anyway, she's an administrative employee who does a lot of administrative work where she, she comes in before and after hours, oftentimes when it's dark out, and it's more of a, a safety issue rather than using the vehicle for county purposes. I mean, you can, you can make a broad definition of county purpose to include that, but it's, it's really more of a situation where you have an employee who is arriving and leaving in, in the dark and having to park a couple blocks away. So I guess, from that standpoint, I'd, I'd like to see the criteria clarified to include something like that.
Safety. I know there have been others that have approached the Board at those issues, especially in winter time when there was a little daylight and they were coming in early and staying late.
Yeah, and, yeah, again, the, the main issue here is, we have very clear criteria for one section of our process, and that's the temporary. We have no criteria established in the ordinance for our permanent. And so that's really where, where, where we need to get to. And how we get to that, I can provide the Board what a, what a picture would look like if we were not to grandfather in, what's currently out there, how that would impact the various departments. And we can, we can provide some additional language with regards to safety in there for the Board to look at. I think, moving forward, that would help keep this progressing and get something taken care of on this, so we can wrap it up.
The current process, Lori, or Rory, it doesn't come to the Board. It comes through the maintenance office. Is that correct?
No, actually, it, it does occasionally, but technically, that document that gets filled out, it needs to get filled out by the department head and turn that into the boardroom.
Yeah.
So that doesn't go through maintenance anymore?
Some people still run it through us. If they do, we take it directly to the Board.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That hasn't always been, maybe from an equitable standpoint. It's just maybe sometimes who, who you've approached and.
Yeah.
Why?
Yes, exactly.
No, I like the idea of you bringing back criteria and going from there. Are some proposed things for a discussion?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item C, motion that the personnel requisition for the final financial specialist full-time in the treasurer's office be approved as recommended by Linda Hinsman. I believe this was a replacement for you.
Second.
And the start date was March 8th or later, I believe you said, too. So, okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Item D, motion that the travel request submitted by Amanda Fesenmeyer, Human Resources Director, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same to attend the National Public Employer Labor Relations Association Annual Conference in Louisville, Kentucky, scheduled for April 23rd to 26th in 2023, for an estimated cost of $2,373.
So moved.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Moving on to item 10, the exciting work session for today. Discussion and possible board action, consideration of all aspects of the fiscal year '24 Black Hawk County budget.
We have a quick break.
Yes, sure. Please do. Going to take a quick break in case you didn't hear Grant.
We're all fleeing.
I see that. Yeah, well, it might be a shorter session than.
I actually have a scar on my head from that first Udom.
Construction was behind schedule, so like, you know, at first, like the first couple weeks of the end camp and stuff, we were practicing outside and stuff, and then we finally moved in to get ready for the first game, but they still, they had all the, these basketball bleachers in there.
Oh.
Set up.
Set up.
That wouldn't have normally been in there, and I had to climb underneath them to plug in the extension cord for my.
Nailed it right in.
I got seven staples in my head.
Oh, my gosh. You didn't share that memory with us. That's what I said when she starts, yeah. New ones on top of it, then, yeah, see, that's why I always said to her.
Not yet.
I'm in the one intense part, but there's another intense part that I don't know about yet.
Budgeting is the most, you talk about auditing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I hope so.
I don't think you get as much help with budgeting.
No, I'm pretty much on my own here.
Yeah, coming up, yeah. And it's there, yes.
Pull it.
Yeah.
We sit here and be prepared.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We got a nice.
We've all heard, I think there have been comments made about it.
They're a little upset that they didn't change.
No, I meant, oh, we are. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, there's a little monitor thing.
Yeah, usually they're.
Yeah, that's kind of weird, isn't it?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's where it's from, but since that's different here, that makes sense.
Thanks, Al.
You guys ready?
Okay, yep, thank you.
I'll remember that.
All right. I think we're ready. Back in session, if you're ready. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Let's see if I can get this to work this morning. So we'll start our budget work session for the 28th, and I put, I thought I would just share a little bit of the schedule. We've been pretty fluid up until now about what our topics are going to be, but I think now we've got all the pieces pulled together. Hopefully, we will be able to make our final decisions this week, maybe today or possibly Thursday if we need it. We've already got publication notices scheduled, so that we'll have that first maximum levy hearing March 14th, and that will require a supermajority yes vote due to the rural levy. Then, we will immediately on the 14th, after that hearing, we will set the date for the final budget hearing, hopefully for March 28th, and then our final adoption and hearing should be March 28th. So if other decisions are made in that time, that could affect that, but I don't anticipate it. So hopefully, we will be good to go there. Today, I thought we would start out kind of looking at the impacts of the adjustment decisions that were made last week. So this sheet, if you'll recall, we, oh, and I forgot to change this wording. So the rural libraries are actually getting an increase of 6%. And I meant to change the wording on this, and I apologize, I didn't get it done. Looks like we're reducing them. We really aren't. We, we did reduce their initial requests slightly, but they're still getting a very nice increase to 6%. We also made a decision last week on the compensation board, recommendations for the elected officials to zero, so that is reflected. You'll see that total. Most of it is in the countywide levy. There is a small portion that goes to the rural levy, so that's why I split between those two sections of the worksheet. And then, we also discussed, over the past couple of weeks, changing several, the way we pay for several capital projects. So I have gone ahead and shown you what those adjustments would do. We moved several projects for the jail to be paid using the commissary fund, that, the epoxy showers, overhead door, security grading for the pod balcony. We also moved the painting for the attorney's department to be paid from the attorney's fine collection fund. And then, the VA patio and sidewalk installation, it was discussed last week, and I'm just using the previous amount I had. If you remember, last week, Rory talked about making that a much larger project, but moving it to ARPA. So I'm just only dealing with the part that was previously in the budget. Then, as I went through, I've spent a lot of time the last week kind of going back through, double-checking numbers and learning more about things. The 60-40 fund, I did, we did not have our deputies that are supposed to be paid from the 60-40 fund. They were still in the sheriff's tax budget, so this next line is correcting those out of there so that they will be paid using the 60%, the 40%, and actually a portion of the attorney's fine collections as well. Then, we have a new thing this year, and I don't know how much you talked about this last year, but the legislature did pass a law late last May that changed the prior business property tax credit to be, it's an exemption now, so it, it's made calculating the taxes for a commercial property extremely difficult because the first portion of their property is taxed as residential, the rest goes to commercial. That does cost all of us tax bodies quite a bit, so the state did agree to backfill it for at least one year. And I was really conservative earlier when I calculated that, so now I have kind of trued that up to what we really think we will get. And so, there's a fairly substantial adjustment there from correcting that. And that change was made percentage-wise, or was that dollar, a dollar? Dollar amount. Dollar amount. Yep. Yep. And then the next one, I had a little rounding adjustment I just put in there to get our numbers to balance. And then I did, because of, had some unfortunate things also that happened. Because the state has now reduced our valuations for this year, I had taken the maximum amount that we could levy from the general fund to transfer to secondary roads. I had also used the maximum amount we could levy for the rural fund to transfer the secondary roads. Well, now that we're applying lower valuations, those caps are lower. So unfortunately, I had to come back and reduce the amounts that we're providing to the secondary roads fund. So that's what that $25,000 is in the general basic fund, and then $47,000 in the rural fund. And then I have a recommendation, really to relieve some pressure on the rural levy fund. I think that we can reduce that levy below the maximum. I'm suggesting to 95%, and it's probably actually slightly lower than that. And the reason that I'm suggesting that is because since we already chose to use, to directly deposit the local option fund and use it for road construction, there will actually be more funds going into secondary roads from that. So I'm suggesting to help out the rural levy, that we reduce that by that $147,000. And the secondary roads fund will still have more total revenue than they had last year by making that change. And those are all the things that you've already made choices about, or kind of corrections that I made, except for that last one, that is a suggestion really just to help our rural levy.
Because we've been at 100% for a while.
Couple of years. In fact, last year may have been the first year you moved up from 95% to 100 in the rural levy.
Oh, okay.
The general basic levy, I think that transfer's been at 100% for a while. So they're both staying at 100%. It's just that when your valuations are lower, that amount is lower.
So you'd need a motion from us probably to change?
Yes, I think that'd be good.
To the 95%?
Make sure you're, that moving that 147 is acceptable.
I'll make that motion if the timing's appropriate.
And I'll second that motion.
Thank you both. Then moved and seconded, I assume let's do roll call vote for a resolution. Thank you.
Okay, so the motion is to change the rural fund transfer to secondary roads from 100% to 95%, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
No change in general fund transfer. Okay. Little?
Yes.
Swart?
Yes.
Drelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Naylan?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. And the next thing I wanted to review with you, just thought it would be good to kind of review how our budget's changed for 2024, and honestly, what the picture might look like in 2025. I'm not going, I don't think, to read all these off to you unless someone wants me to do that. I will just hit on some of the highlights. So we have a large increase in investment earnings this year from all the interest rate changes in the environment. So that's giving us new revenue, I'll call it, for 2024 of about $1 million.
And why was that again, you said?
Just the general market environment. Interest rates are rising, and of course, we do have substantial reserves that are allowing us to earn revenue as well, so those two things combined are providing a very large new revenue source.
That's good, because just two years ago, we were losing revenue.
It's a dramatic change in interest earnings, yes, it is. I think those are the only huge changes to talk about in that first section. Then some other things to remember, you remember our commercial industrial property tax rollback replacement funds? We are on about year three of an eight-year phase out, so that's declined about $165,000 this year, and it will do the same again in fiscal '25. And then, it's interesting how the business property tax credit is working. The rollback replacement will likely increase the amount we're getting for this year only, but again, they've only promised they're giving us that for one year, so I don't know what that looks like for 2025.
But don't count on it.
Yes, when we, when you monitor what the conversation's going on in the State House this year, it doesn't seem likely right now. So then we get to expense changes, our payroll increases without health insurance, and without new positions, about $651,000. And then health insurance, we are projecting a 5% increase, that's about half a million. And then again, I went through a lot of the other increases. I'm only going to point out a couple of significant ones. We know the health services for the jail are increasing substantially. We've talked about that quite a bit. And I did, one thing I did reduce, it does appear that the cost for consolidated communications in 2023 was budgeted both in the general fund and the rural fund, so that, I have reduced that. Others are, you've got, you know, smaller amounts up and down, not a lot of changes. Conservation, as we took out their capital, that brought that budget down, $211,000. And then we will get to the new positions requested, which we're going to talk about more in a couple of minutes, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about them right now. So, and another new thing that's coming is we, we're putting in that turnover amount, let's put it that way. So we're going to budget, whatever positions you choose to budget will be budgeted at 100% in the departments. But then overall, we will not tax for about $1 million of that, just to, in an effort not to grow our fund balance more, because we do know there's turnover. We do know it takes a couple of months at least to fill positions, and we are seeing savings to our budget. So we're trying to reduce the growth in fund balance by applying that.
And we'll never have 100% of our positions filled at the same time, so yeah, there's some room in there.
Wonderful if we really could, but I have never seen that happen yet. So then, something that I just think in setting the table for today's conversation, I just did a very rough estimate of some of the things that we know will have an impact in 2025. Investment earnings increase, we talked about, is really only a one-year thing, unless rates would triple again next year, which is, I think, unlikely to happen, so that increase of $1 million won't happen again, I don't think. Then, again, the property tax backfill coming down, business property tax credit coming down, that turnover amount coming down. And then I just estimated another $650,000 in payroll costs. So I think when we start working on the 2025 budget, with the limited knowledge I have of that today, we're looking at how to fund probably another $3.4 million. So decisions that we make today that are long-term definitely will have an impact on that for next year.
So we can expect that $3.4 million. Expect, we don't know.
Today, we can guestimate it at that.
Yep, just estimated right now.
The next thing I wanted to talk, next topic I want to talk about is our 60-40 fund. As you know, we do fund a few things out of the 60%. We fund security for the courthouse, that's a contract with Permar. There is an IT security person that is funded out of the 60%. And then we fund a deputy also out of there. And you can see for 2024, I'm projecting those expenses at $330,000, but we're only projecting the 60% revenue at $240,000. So that 60% fund is anticipated to have a loss of $90,000 for 2024. It also had a loss in 2021 and 2022, and we'll expect it to in 2023. So I am concerned that the cost of those are not being able to keep up with the revenue. Right now, at the end of fiscal '22, we had a carryover fund balance of $207,000. I anticipate we'll probably use close to $100,000 of that in 2023, and another $100,000 in 2024. So by the end of 2024, that carryover will be gone, and I think likely by 2025, we will not, we just will not be able to fund what we fund out of there today. So.
So we need to have those discussions in '24.
We absolutely have to have them, right, you have to have them in '25. If you would want to have it now, you know, you could consider maybe paying for the deputy just out of the general basic fund if you chose to. We don't have to make that decision for 2024, it just would give you a little more cushion in that fund.
How far are we behind you in past years on revenue on a fiscal year?
For 2024, it'll be about $100,000, and for 2023, I'm guestimating at $100,000.
Go back to '22, I mean, are you anticipating they're going to be collecting less in the next year, or the same or more?
No, I'm sorry, now I understand your question. I'm expecting collections to be the same, basically, as they were in 2023, or are, I guess in 2022, and then I adjusted it for 2023. That's the best information I have, is what we're collecting now.
It's the expenses you're talking about.
It's the, yeah, so the revenue I'm estimating flat, but the expenses are growing, because we all know the cost of personnel grows.
So, but we are good for this year.
We are good for, I think there should be enough for 2024.
Yeah, we just need to address it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know. Wanted to put that on your radar now.
Yep.
And then the 40% share does appear to have adequate to fund what is being funded out of that. And I don't know if I've got the contracted position labeled correctly, I put social work diversion staff, is that what that is? Okay, thanks. And then they've got some software they generally pay for out of here, their PACE software and the Benchmark software. And we think we can fund the walkthrough metal detector for the courthouse out of there. So you had seen on a previous thing that I took that out of our capital. And then they generally have shooting range expenses of approximately $25,000. So the 40%, the revenue does cover the expenses for 2024, so that piece is, should be okay.
Like you said, you're putting that on our shoulders. I think we'll put it back on yours to remind us of this when we need to address it.
I don't think I'll forget, so that's okay.
I don't think so either, yeah, you'll be watching it monthly, so, yeah.
I just don't like surprises, so I'm assuming you don't either, so if I know about it now, I want to make you aware of it now.
No, so when would you think we'd need to, I mean, you'll be looking at it, monitoring it, I know from a monthly State place, but I just thought, so that we, when we enter budget.
Yes, by the time we start the budget for 2025, we're going to have to, probably, you know, we're going to have to do something differently.
And then you'll be even more familiar with our budgets.
Yes, I've learned a lot, but I'm not going to pretend I've got it all under control yet. Yeah, sure. So then the next handout I have today is the next update to our property tax askings worksheet. So you can see the changes that you've made so far. We actually now, well, because of the new valuations being lower, our general basic levy has to be lower, because we can only, we were already at the max. So you see that coming down 1.1%, because it has to. And I've also made some changes in the capital column for things that we move to other places and those kind of things. So then the general supplemental levy is where there is a good change. So at the top of the second page of that, you can see we now are showing that being at a reduction of 0.8%. So when we look at our maximum property tax levy for the hearing that we'll have on March 13th, that's actually going to show a reduction, so that one would not even require a supermajority vote. But then we move on to the rural levy. And if you remember, we started out probably at a 13% increase in that levy. I've got it worked down to 5.1% increase, but that's as, if there's other things you want me to look into for that, we can look into decreasing it, but that's, that's, and that does include that reduction, or, yeah, the reduction of the transfer to secondary roads of $147,000 is out of there. So our overall taxes at the maximum levy hearing date actually would be a reduction of the two levies combined of nearly half a percent, $146,000 roughly.
But Michelle, wouldn't there still have to be a supermajority vote for the rural fund increase?
Yes, as I said, there would. Yep. And then, as we've talked about, I have not, other than changing to the lower valuations and correcting the, for the business property tax credit replacement, there really aren't any other changes to debt service. So we're still proposing that to have a reduction of 9.1%. So that would leave our overall property tax askings for the county, in total county budget this year, would be down 0.9%, or $324,000. Which would be good news, I think, for everyone.
It is, based on the fact that we weren't going to get to use any of our, any growth.
Yes, I was.
Previously, taken from us, so.
Pleasantly surprised by that, which is one of the reasons I went back and put together the schedule of the increases and decreases to help us understand how that could even come about. And it really has a lot to do with that. We made, we have three large pieces of revenue that are kind of one-time, I shouldn't call them revenue, but again, the investment earnings, the business property tax credit rollback replacement, and then the turnover. That's what's being allowed to put us in such a good position right now for 2024. It just is not likely to repeat for 2025. So any questions about that? I know I'm throwing lots of paper at you this morning.
It is. We were just talking about that. From when we started, from when we started, all the different sheets, yeah.
We have lots for you to consider and think about.
Well, appreciate it. It's good to have the information and, yeah, so you'll be able to look back as you know.
Ask a question, Michelle. As far as the million dollar for the turnover factor, I can't remember the term used for it. You say that that wouldn't be available next year, but if.
It will be available, but it won't be another increase.
Right, right. But you could still continue to keep that in the budget as long as it's not being used, and in our recent experiences that it's not being used, right?
Right, it, right, the idea is to hopefully not have vacancies be what's causing our fund balance to grow. So we, I would hope we can keep it at a million. We'll see how a year performs to see what our vacancy amount is. But what happens though, I, today, I'm not prepared to say we could double it for 2025. That's what we'd have to do to add, you know, to take another million of expenses off, if that makes sense. So that's why, that's why I'm bringing that up.
Yeah, it just wouldn't be adding $1 million next year.
Right, exactly. Yep, it's hard to, I'm not good at explaining that, I guess, it's a difficult, difficult concept.
It's not an avenue next year that we can reduce the tax burden by $1 million, because we're already doing it this year.
Yeah.
Very, very well said, that's it.
Unfortunately, yeah.
I mean, and maybe if we really have a lot of vacancies, maybe we could, but I think we're all hoping not to, so, at least from a staff perspective. So if we're ready to go on, I'll go on to the next. This is the, you're used to this worksheet, but I've now corrected it for the adjusted valuations from the state and coming up with our new tax rates. So this would show our overall county tax rate at $9.27 roughly. And the effect on a residential property. These changed quite a bit because of the rollback dropping. So their gross county tax would rise by $1.79, or 0.6%. Rural residential property, whoops, too fast, not quite so good, because, because remember, our rural levy is still sitting at a 5% increase. our rural levy is still sitting at a 5% increase. So theirs would rise $10.73 or 2.16%. And as we talk about commercial and industrial property, they're virtually staying the same. 0.37% drop there. And ag property is the category that's seeing the largest increase. $33.85 increase in taxes or a 4.15% ratio of increase. And multi-residential will be very happy because theirs dropped by 14.59% quite a bit. It has been all about the legislature the last couple of years, hasn't it? Yes. I also, and I'm not going to talk about this too much. I thought if anybody really wants to dive into what the impact of the state's change in the valuations was, I do have another worksheet in there comparing the original and corrected values. The tax dollars changed too because of, for example, that secondary transfer or the general basic transfer to secondary roads, since that cap came down, that decreased how much we can tax for that. And then I know we have lots of conversations about our fund balance. And so I, I did put together a chart showing what has happened with our fund balance for the last several years. And I believe in fiscal 19, we had a large jump there. I lost that percentage. The fiscal 18 should say 38%. It's disappeared off my slide for some reason, but it jumped to 51% in fiscal 19. And I do think that was primarily due to the sale of Countryview at that time. And it continued to grow 55% in 2020, took a pretty substantial jump in 2021. And a piece of that is the CARES Act funding. Jumped again at fiscal 22 to 75%. Some of that is ARPA funds that were transferred to the general funds. So then I did really rough projection for fiscal 23, showing that our fund balance, best I can say today, it's likely to rise, but it, the percentage will probably not be so high because I think our expenses, assuming we use what we budgeted, which is always hard to guess today. But, so the percentage may be lower, but the amount may be higher. Then I factored in all the things, well, if we would do all the capital that was in the request, if we would fund those out, out of fund balance and the turnover factor, I'm showing that for fiscal 24, you'll see that fund balance maybe begin to come down. And so I've got it at 60% of expenditures for, through 2024. Just to try to give us some idea of where we're going and the decisions we're making, how that will affect our fund balance into the future.
Well, thank you. I think that was where we were all talking about wanting to at least take a serious look at the fund balance and strategically maybe look at it later too, but at least this takes us.
Yeah. This is just kind of a first, first look at what it might look like.
Yeah.
So that brings us to decisions yet we need to make. And one of those is the additional staffing. We had not made those choices yet. And I may not have put those in your packets again, just in the interest of not killing quite so many trees. So you can see it on the, on the screens today. Each position listed out.
Well, I think even with, including all the new positions that have been proposed, we're presenting a really sound and solid budget that I think is pretty responsible and sustainable. I mean, for, you know, residential property tax owners who are, that's the bulk of, I mean, that's who we, who we represent. Those are the people, you know, $1.79, something in my house, you know, just under $4. I was looking the other night, you know, how much does my Netflix go up every year? And you compared Netflix subscriptions to this, it's gone up exponentially. And what do I get out of Netflix? You know, I enjoyed the Anadolu thing, but everything else was pretty blah this year. But it's, you know, and so just think about, you know, services are going up all across the board. And the rise in, the small modest rise of $1.79 is not what's going to be breaking any seniors in our community. It's not what we'll be breaking. You know, people that are, you know, living on the margins are, are struggling. It's not going to be that $1.79. It's actually going to be the services that we deliver that help those people out.
Michelle, which ones of the positions are grant funded?
So the, the new clinical dental hygienist, while that isn't necessarily grant funded, but it does bring additional revenue that they receive from it. So I'm going to kind of put that in that category. That one is offset with revenue. The preparedness coordinator in the health department is 100% grant funded, as is the 1/10 of the public nurse in the health department. And I think that is all that are grant funded.
We had some revenue generating that in other departments.
Correct. In conservation, we expect, yes, we expect the additional position there to generate additional revenue. I think they have incorporated most of that revenue into their budget already.
The reason I asked that question in the past, the board has questioned if it's grant funded for a new position, when the grant leaves, dries up or whatever, does that position then go on the tax rolls? Traditionally, it has, has and it hasn't. So I was curious on these grant funded or revenues, if the revenue stream is gone or the grant's gone, does that position disappear then too?
And that would be the board's choice at that time, I think. That would be the appropriate response to that. And correct me if I'm wrong.
So we'd have to be made aware, I guess, obviously you wouldn't be tracking that or supervisors wouldn't, but.
So like the preparedness position, kind of an example, that's, you see a 0.5 here because the other half of it is funded through EMA. So it's kind of a shared role. In the past, we had had some grant funded positions that were split up where one person was working on like three different grants to where that was a little bit sometimes problematic when that grant would go away. We've really worked closely with those departments to make sure that the funding follows the rules in a way that we are able to make those decisions if we need to. But a lot of those grant funding positions, they're very fluid. We see, health department is a great example. There's a lot of, with their accreditation and with their restructuring, they've been able to open more opportunities for grant funded positions. And, and they've been, you know, upfront with staff at times where it's like this is a five-year contract, this is a three-year contract. But again, I think that's all being handled really well and managed really well. But you're right, it is a discussion and a point of interest that you guys will want to review at that time.
Now, isn't that the preparedness coordinator in EMA? That was 100% funded grants, I thought? But no?
I am not sure the other half.
I don't know how EMA is.
Yeah, I think, right.
Only health.
Yeah. EMA had a part-time position that they budgeted for in the last year or two and hadn't filled yet. So it's, it is in EMA's tax budget, I would say, that other half. But this half is grant funded.
And that was an opportunity that Caitlin actually had identified, our deputy director had said, you know, she had a need for emergency preparedness within the health department with the counties, you know, within their efforts. And she had a limited funding, you know, stream with the, with the grant funds. And it worked well with EMA seeking a part-time to really, and then for me, my perspective was I prefer full-time. I mean, just to generally, you have benefits, you have more incentives. It could kind of widen your pool a little bit more. So we'll see how this goes if it gets approved to move forward. But that is correct. I believe EMA is not funded through grants and it's only the health department's portion.
Caitlin, are you available on Zoom?
I think she's.
Michelle, she's, she's out today.
Oh, is there someone from the health department, I guess, available to discuss her positions that she's got available or she's requesting?
Yeah, I, I can, I can do my best to answer your question.
Okay, great. Thank you. The community health worker, I guess, that was the proposed new position. And I guess I'm curious about how that works being done now and how the addition of this position changes things or what it does to the department. I don't know. May, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but whoever, yeah, appreciate any help or on that one.
Yeah, let me just pull something up here real quick. Can I, can I, can you give me two seconds and I'll circle back?
Sure.
I think that's Matthew Verberkam, by the way.
I was gonna say, just anybody else will do. Yeah, that's all right. I was gonna comment too, to let the board know. I was gonna say that on the conservation department's position, the full-time naturalist one, I knew that was, talked about the revenue generating and how good it was going to be, I guess, for the schools. But I just was gonna let the board know that I think it was one of the board members of Friends of Hartman had contacted me last Tuesday and mentioned that they were funding two interns for that program as well. And they were obviously eager to see if the position was going to go forward. And I said, well, we'd have those decisions today. But I thought that was good news that they were willing to fund that.
If we want to circle back to the.
I was gonna say.
Health department, we can maybe go through.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I was gonna ask Al, I was gonna say he or Caitlin to talk more about that public health and info analyst position where one added 0.5 and one removed 0.5. And I was just kind of curious, since that's a net change for the county, what that means for us, I guess, from a staffing standpoint or how you see that working? Or is Toki doing, is she going to be here working at all? Or how does that, why, why the change, I guess, if it's really the net result?
Al, you IT director.
Thank you.
Toki's been helping us for quite a long time. So she's been very invaluable to our department, even though she's not part of our department. And we were just kind of discussing and with her and Caitlin and decided that would be a very good use of, of her abilities. And, and structurally, her job has changed over the years as well. So where this, this kind of works out so that we can do the split. So on paper, it's a wash since it's, you know, and we, we do gain, we gain a half FTE, but she loses a half FTE. So I think overall, we've been wanting to have someone stationed out at the public health to have better service over there. Not that it's a far drive, but it's still a drive for us when we have to go over there. And so having someone present, you know, just on hand is, is, I think is going to be very beneficial for the county.
But isn't that what she's doing now?
She's, she only does, she's, she kind of helps us out when we kind of beg and ask her to do some things. It's really, it's really not her responsibility and we truly appreciate her efforts. So in, in some ways, this is making it official and this kind of works with her career trajectory too, so.
So we won't be seeing her here. She'll just be maintaining there.
Yeah. She, she can be anywhere in, in the county. Sorry, I didn't answer your question there.
No, it's all right. I was just trying to see how this made it, how this made staffing different for us. But was different because I know Toki's worked on these kinds of issues for us over there. And kind of the in-house expert from a standpoint of help having IT there when we didn't have so much.
Sure. And, and honestly, we're looking forward to some of her expertise too, because she has a lot of HIPAA experience. And I think we all can get better with HIPAA knowledge and experience, so.
So how does that work for your department then? How will you be working together? Or how will that, will she come here for your IT department meetings?
She can, or she can meet virtually too.
Or virtually, but participating, I should say.
Yep. And I think IT would assume full supervisory role over her position.
So this is probably a Matthew question then for the work that she's doing for the health department. Is she no longer going to do that? I'm assuming then some of the things that she's taking on a larger role with IT?
It's, it's, it's supposed to be like a 50/50 or kind of a fluctuating role. So on, on paper, it's going to be 50/50. How that, how that lays out, I, I'm not entirely sure, you know? And, and we're pretty flexible with this position. If there's times where health needs additional assistance, you know, that will change, you know? It kind of just varies from month to month. But that is the, that is the goal is a 50/50 split. Now, I don't, I can't speak on behalf of what her role is currently with this new position. I believe Caitlin was working on, or doing that, the job description or the roles. I don't know if you want to speak to that.
And how that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we kind of were modeling after conservation and engineering who shared the GIS technician. You recall last year, that was solely under engineers when we originated with that GIS technician position. And then as that position evolved and as the engineering staff learned more about that role, we saw also a need for it within conservation. So we worked with Kathy and, and Mike on that. And that's kind of the same premise for this as well. This was brought to Al and Caitlin, you know, both came to me and asked about the possibility for this position being kind of a unique role already, that Toki's role is really heavy in that public information analyst type work with compliance to Medicare, Medicaid, a lot of the billing processing that they do over at the health department, obviously quite a bit of the HIPAA productive health information tasks that she has. The previous year, we also kind of restructured a role to have a compliance specialist, if you recall, in the health department. That was to supplement the work with Toki. So this is a very kind of evolving area, I will just say. And that kind of works well within IT, but also meets health department's needs. I know Caitlin, her experience with this at Lynn County, they had a similar role like this, but it truly was under IT. As Caitlin said, you know, I can't really provide that guidance and that oversight on the IT needs within the health department that this particular role does. So an opportunity as for explore some efficiencies here, some, some growth here. But it was really kind of modeled after what we did with conservation and engineering sharing that GIS tech role. This one, I will say, it's not just as clear cut necessarily as to, but some of her workload with the health department will reduce. And they have that kind of capacity built in there already with a compliance specialist position. And then, you know, I anticipate that there will be changes for this. Possibly maybe it completely goes under IT someday, or we realize that this, you know, may have to backpedal and say, okay, is this really working for both their needs? But.
So we're really kind of exploring at this point in time?
It is. It's an opportunity to explore, kind of seeing how, I mean, and I would say we've had conversations with myself, Toki, and the two other department heads to really, you know, sink through this. But it's hard to know until you get in there and really determine if this works well and, and can support, you know, the employees' needs as well as the department's needs really. So.
So we could have done it without the split on paper, but that's just as, just as easy, I guess. I'm thinking we could have been working through that.
It could have possibly gone all the way under IT. I think that difficulties with that is that there still is a, quite a bit of workload and, and she's very integrated into the health department's process, you know.
Operations. And there are some projects still funded in operations, but we really haven't talked about if there's some that you just want to completely take off the table for 2024. Yeah.
Okay, you're just looking at totals at the moment.
This is just the summary page. If you, we can go to Rory.
That's all right.
Was very creative and gave us lots of projects, so.
He did. I told him it was kind of gonna be showtime today.
You know, before we move on to, to capital, like we went through, you know, that's, I mean, sometimes this, I'll just be completely honest, sometimes this is a tactic deployed to avoid making hard decisions and publicly having to say where you're at on it. And I think that's what's going on and I'm not going to reward that behavior today.
I don't want to reward it, but I guess I want to make certain that that's what happened.
So I'm, I'm ready to talk about the position within the board office. And we were, we said we are here to make a decision on it today. We've got three supervisors who we can take about. And I'm going to offer a motion to approve the FTE for a full-time communications person in the board office.
I mean, I'll, I'll clearly second the motion. I, I second the sentiment as well that frankly, we're all professionals.
Yeah.
And if we aren't going to be at a meeting or going to be there the entire time, it is our responsibility as elected leaders to stand up and say, what's going on? And I'm disappointed at what does appear to be a tactic. And, and if I'm, if I'm assuming falsely, then I'll, I'll offer that apology when an explanation is, is issued. But without any explanation, the most apparent thing seems to be most likely.
I know. I, I assume there's some conversation on this. Yeah, I was gonna say assume that. I know, I, I assume there's some conversation on this, yeah, I was gonna say, assume that was what was kind of going on, so please help or share.
What, what Mr. Peter just reminded me of is, and I can't possibly state right now without doing research, there are certain areas where a majority of the entire board needs to vote, there are certain areas where it's a majority, the quorum is enough to vote, we've clearly got a quorum, but there might be some concerns on certain items if there were a two-to-one vote today, yeah, and, and I realize we haven't had that at this point, that we wouldn't be in full compliance with those areas that require a majority of the full board, I don't recall off the top of my head, I know I've read in the last year at least one area that requires that, one way of, of taking care of that would be to go, we can move forward with the votes and find out what the code says afterwards, if there's a concern on that, another way would be to, to just wait until there's, there's more here, but I, but I'm certainly not asking anybody to wait.
I know.
I mean, I think I'm, I'm, I'm fine if, if an issue does come up, wants a vote is casted, that we have to come back and, and consider this either Thursday or next Tuesday?
Yeah.
I'm perfectly fine with that, but I also want us to, to be about our business.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Well, I understand that, but I'm gonna disagree, as you know, just because I would like to strive for having all supervisors participate, I know that doesn't mean we're guaranteed to do that Thursday either, and I guess that, to me, would be the show that people aren't being respectful, I guess, of the decisions we need to make, I'd like to hope that both supervisors would be here on Thursday, I certainly don't want to have to go back and repeat any actions that we do, or find out, I guess, after the fact that we've made decisions that would have changed, I, I, yeah, it's unfortunate, the situation we're in.
Is there, is there a way to take an incredibly brief recess, call them, reach out to them?
You could also research the law on that time, too.
Sure.
Incredibly brief, he said.
Yeah, I was gonna say, researching the law can be, it can be a little more of a time.
Well, we can certainly-
Assume we're not talking about an hour or more.
No, no, I think we're talking five minutes.
Yeah, we can try the recess and see if we can connect to at least one, if not both, I'm hoping, but yeah, let's do that, I'm willing to do that, I just don't want to shut us down with just three individuals, I'm sorry, it seems like we have more, and some important decisions to make, too, but yeah, I just, thank you, so if everyone's all right with that, okay, grant as well, we'll take a five-minute recess?
Yep.
There is a listing of things where a majority of the full board is required, and I don't see anything like this in that list.
Michelle, what was it you were gonna do, you said, what were you gonna do?
3:31.12
If we didn't get them back, you said to review some things, was it just?
Well, the capital decisions, I thought, maybe aren't-
Okay, well, I just meant, would it be better to wait for them when everybody's online, or would it be better to just get the question to answer, I know Kathy, we're gonna probably need her to address anything, anybody's got a question on a day, because she can't be here Thursday.
You young guys-
But I said, we can take care of that, but-
This does include-
Otherwise, doesn't, either way, I'm good. I know. I can do. So much for thanking me.
We thought we were just gonna wrap it up.
I just don't think, you know, I've never stopped a reading from voting now before, so I just thought-
I'd rather hash it out this week than at the hearing.
I want it done Thursday, we want it to be done Thursday, and if we can't finish it Thursday, I thought, we, we know we have to, we can back up if we had to, but we shouldn't have to, we can stay till we get it done Thursday, can't we?
Does that-
Well, you may not on Thursday, I was gonna say, I mean, on Thursday, if it ran over an hour, or whatever, you'd be available to finish, that's what I meant, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear, but I just meant, I don't want it to have to go another day if we don't have to, nobody's emailed me, but I didn't expect either one to.
That's what I think as well.
I would have never guessed, I mean, if it's, I never, I know people have it, but to have two.
Is what it is. I know what my advice-
And I don't know her dance, yeah, but I just thought, yeah, I was just assuming he was, I, I don't, I don't know that I've seen him drop off.
I am, I'm working hard.
He's dropped off.
I decided I'd be distracted for a minute, because I-
I think-
I have no control or anything. Yeah, I'm sure we might be, I'm choosing not to, Mike, I'm not going for the vote thing, that's something later, I want, I want all five supervisors, and if I can't get five, I at least want as many as possible, as a second option, and we were gonna meet Thursday, that's what I'm just saying, we don't know why either one dropped off.
Right.
Could have been intentional, it maybe wasn't.
Yeah, the thing is-
I can't imagine.
The hiring decisions are not just for 24 impact, right, they are annuities.
Well, and some of Rory's stuff, too, I was gonna say, I had questions on, but we don't have to answer them today.
It does, while it puts levying a tax as something that requires the-
Which is-
Full membership, it doesn't put-
Yeah, we're already, I know.
It doesn't put budget, it doesn't put hiring, it doesn't put creating new positions.
This really gives directive to Michelle, correct?
Yeah, well-
These votes are putting, putting directive to Michelle, so that she can craft, fully craft that max levy, so we can vote on that.
Well, the max, the max levy's in the books, it's, but, it's, it's about the final hearing, I wanted to get all your decisions this week, yeah, so that I can-
Do you want to come back into session here?
We do.
We can, yeah, okay.
We'll go back in session then, too.
I'll watch. Go ahead, Michelle, I'm sorry, oops.
So our, our intent this week, or my hope, was that we would, that I would be able to gain the board's direction on every, all the decisions you want to make, so that when I publish the hearing notice for that final hearing, I wanted it to have everything in it that we're gonna pass, so we'll know the tax rate ahead of time, the public will know the tax rate ahead of time, instead of having to change it on the fly at the hearing, because I'm, there's a short, you've got to publish it for about two weeks, and so I need to have time to get that all incorporated and do all that.
So our intent, though, is to finish it this week, as we've discussed, and it would be, if not today, Thursday, and we, we, the three of us have said, we stay until it gets done on Thursday, so it's not, like, carried over, or whatever, I'm just hoping, I don't see it up there, that anybody joined, but-
Well, my laptop has apparently decided to adjourn.
But I don't see Tom or Dan, is what I meant, I don't see anyone.
No, I don't see anyone.
So, I'm just-
I need something.
For the questions I have for Rory, I'm wondering if we just wait till Thursday, since everybody would be here, and if everybody's not, we go forward? I don't need your, I don't need your laptop.
Okay, 'cause I can't show you anything right now.
I'm, I'm talking about what we're gonna do here.
So, okay, so what, what I thought you, well, it's just one of the cleanup pieces for the budget.
Yeah.
We had made some preliminary decisions about using different sources of funding for certain capital projects, but I, I don't know necessarily that we have made choices about all the ones that are on the list that we are gonna fund out of funding.
I agree.
So, what I thought we might do today was make sure that you're all on board with funding all those, or if there's some you don't want to fund, then I'll get them out of there.
That was, I think, all of our goal today, too, but this changed the goal.
I know, I know.
Or moved the goalpost, or whatever, but I just thought, so then I'm not certain, we're not doing the same thing, if we do it today with three of us here and not the others, we're almost moving forward with the same decisions, whether it be staffing or capital, to give you that information, which I know would be helpful.
Yeah.
And that's therefore my reasons for saying, why go through Rory's list if I have questions and ask us all to do it, and then-
Then we have to do it again on Thursday anyway.
I don't want to do that, no, but if we have to do it on Thursday with three of us, then I guess we do.
And we did have a question on the floor before we went to recess on the, on the position in the board office.
Oh, yeah. But there again, kind of doing the same thing, I was gonna say, sorry, Chris, but I just thought it's the same thing to answer and address it, and then not have the full board here, I guess, but-
I mean, I know that, you know, in, in last week's meetings, we, we all agreed we were gonna be making those decisions in this meeting today, and that's what I came here to do today.
I know, I know, I, I understand what both of you are saying, and I understand that, too, and I-
And, and, and as I noted, if, if Mike comes back and says that there's an issue here, that we are gonna have to revote, then we have to revote, but I'm also comfortable taking a vote at a meeting where I was elected to take votes at, and if, if other folks feel like they want to, for whatever reason, need to abstain, then, then that's their, they can make that judgment, right?
I know.
If it comes, if it comes back that we have to revote, then we can, then we, of course, would reconsider.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's, I'm sorry, they need to share what that conference is, I guess, but they will in a minute, I'm sure.
They don't have a conclusion yet.
No, I know. Well, the whole thing, just, we need a supermajority for budget, we just, I just want to make sure we do what we need to do to be right.
These are important decisions that impact future years as well, so it makes sense to have everyone here.
And it makes sense for anyone to stay here.
It does, but-
That is incredibly important, though.
It is, I would like to be the one scolding and saying, too, I guess, can we commit to Thursday, because we, we have committed to Thursday, so I'm, I don't see that.
Or tomorrow, or Friday.
Oh, I know, it can be any day, but I just want for Thursday, because Thursday's kind of a planned-
I know, it should be on everyone's schedule, in theory.
Yeah. Well, you gonna enlighten us on something more, or not?
We just figured out pizza orders.
Pizza orders.
My conclusion at this stage is simply that if a vote is taken, the vote happens to be two-to-one on this particular question, that would be a, a passing vote.
On, oh, on this particular question?
Yeah, on the question that's been moved and seconded.
Okay.
All right, well, I'll go ahead and call the question.
Uh-oh, sorry, I need to do that, then, right? All right, please answer as your name is called.
Paul.
Yes.
It's worked, yes. Bailey?
You know I'm gonna be a no, no, and I will, hopefully, if we're back Thursday, gets us, get the rest of this done, with the exception of, is there anyone else of the department heads that would like to answer questions, or Kathy's mentioned she can't be here Thursday, is there anything on her budget, or her staffing, or, no, no, she didn't have staffing, her, on her capital items, I guess, that anybody has an issue or question, or would like addressed?
Um-
Not that somebody can't come back on, like you said, on Thursday, too, but she's here at least to answer any questions.
Will be here, but I just won't be here.
Yeah. I don't, I said-
Have any questions on capital?
No. I think you talked about, and a couple of those items are in the capital funding request, so, yeah, no, I don't, you, Chris?
No.
Okay.
I just want to make sure, we approved, we approved positions for, we held off on health.
Yeah, we're holding off to them till Thursday.
We approved board, conservation.
Do attorneys?
Attorneys, did we do IT, or that sort of-
IT was the, kind of the one, that was the-
The one that was in the wash.
Yeah, it wasn't, it's just on paper, anyway, I don't, do we need a motion on that? I guess, to do the halftime IT, should we?
I think so, and then I know where to fund it at.
I'd make the motion to approve the IT staffing.
I'll second it.
You're gonna be in trying to force me to do no on everyone?
Well, no, I'm, all I'm saying is, if, I don't want to, I don't want to get to where we're just cherry picking which ones, if we're gonna say we're gonna address the staffing, then I say, let's, let's address the staffing.
Well, then I'm ready to not, then to stop addressing staffing, too, I just, I would like to at least try to get all five of us at the meeting and make the decisions that way, but if we can't on Thursday, since we already are deferring to Thursday, I, I was, I was happy to go back to the ones that said, did we already make decisions on, and just clarifying that we did, because we did on some of those, correct? Conservation, attorney-
Conservation, we did.
We didn't, I don't think-
We didn't do health.
We didn't get to, no, we didn't do HR, we didn't get to HR, oh, I don't believe either.
Oh.
I think that's correct.
All right, I was gonna say, so.
And I don't know exactly when people dropped off, I mean, I don't think we heard, I don't think we heard Dan or Tom for the conservation position.
I, no, I believe Tom.
Tom or no, that's correct, and, but Dan dropped off, then, correct?
I didn't hear about that.
Yeah, Dan was not on for that one, I wrote that down.
But we did make the decision on that one, all right.
I just, yeah.
All right, do you have anything further, Michelle?
Nope.
Neither of you?
I mean, I'm okay with adjourning till Thursday at this point, but I, I'm also capable of moving forward, too, because it's-
Well, we, staffing and capital, and capital, unless somebody's got, Rory's is the only one, I think, I really had capital questions on, I think you've already addressed some of those.
I was just gonna make sure that you were comfortable with everything.
Michelle, I, I do have a, take a quick second back here, a little bit of reservation about the 60/40 in funding that deputy position out of that, if we're gonna get to a point in the next two years where that, the portion of that fund is not really, is able to sustain that position, and we are currently, as we're, as we're budgeted, we're at, what, .9% decrease, right, we could, we could absorb that with still a 0% increase, and to me, that seems like a more sustainable approach than taking for a year or two out of that 60/40 fund, and just ultimately gonna have to come out of general anyways, and especially with not knowing what the legislature is gonna do with, well, anything ever, I would be, I would be comfortable, given the fact that our, our end number was, was still a, a .9% decrease, I'd be comfortable, as one of the, I guess, voiced that, I don't know what that looks like in terms of the numbers and how that would impact levy, but-
I would figure that out for you.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all right. Well, it's something you can bring on Thursday-
Yes, I can.
... discussion, I thought, maybe in review.
Do we still have a motion on the floor?
But I don't think, which one did you think was on?
To approve IT fund? I'll, I'll propose to be tabled.
Yeah, I'll accept.
Yeah, the IT.
I'll table that.
Yeah, the IT.
You'd like to table that?
Oh, sure, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
That's gonna be a pretty easy one, I hope, but, except, I know I had a lot of questions, but, all right, is there any reports or information for the board? I know there's gotta be a motion for adjournment.
Oh, no.
I'll move, I'll move to adjourn.
Thank you, Chris.
Second.
Thank you, meeting is adjourned.